政治及内地事务方面的环节了我会先请聂局长做简短的介绍然后委员可以开始提问了那么我先请聂局长简介希望你尽量争取
Please now press the button. Mr. Patrick Nip, over to you. I hope you will finish within five minutes. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, members. Chairman, I will be introducing to members on the main points of the estimates of expenditure in 2019-20. In 2019-20, the CMAB is allocated $7,668 million. The focus of work for this year is first electoral arrangements. In order to prepare for public elections in the election cycle starting this year, we have learned from the experience of the last election cycle and has implemented some improvement measures on the basis of our examining of electoral laws, among which is the Electoral Legislation Miscellaneous Amendments Bill 2018, which was passed in January this year. And last year, we also submitted another amendment bill in order to introduce technical amendments. Number two, District Council 2019 Ordinary Election, which will take place on the 24th of November this year. In mid-year, the EAC will consult a public consultation to solicit views on the proposed guidelines on election-related activities in respect of the District Council election and also will consult members. The 2019 voter registration has started in April. Starting from last year, electors applying to change their registered address are required to submit address proof at the same time. The REO will continue to carry out statutory inquiry process and implement checking measures. In promoting the Constitution and the Basic Law, we were putting aside $17 million to organize or sponsor various types of promotional activities so as to allow the public a better understanding of one country, two systems. About rights of the individual, we will do so through the Equal Opportunities Commission and Office of the Privacy Commissioner for Personal Data. We will do this through giving provisions to these two bodies to do legislative, promotional, and educational work. The EOC will be receiving $114.5 million in order to implement four anti-discrimination ordinances. The PCPD will continue to promote public awareness in protecting and respecting personal data as well as encouraging public and private organizations to embrace personal data protection. They will receive $78.57 million. As for discrimination law review, we have proposed a bill to LEGCO in late 2018 in order to implement eight recommendations. This is now being scrutinized by a bill's committee. We hope there will be early passage of the bill. There are remaining recommendations which will be studied. And when the bill has been passed, we will continue to study those recommendations and follow up as appropriate. As for promotion of children's rights, we are putting aside $1.1 million, including manpower costs for implementing programs for enhancing children's rights promotion. And on anti-discrimination on grounds of sexual orientation and gender identity, we are stepping up publicity and public education. And we are promoting the adoption of Code of Practice against discrimination and employment on ground of sexual orientation. Three hundred and fifty public and private organizations employing over 550,000 employees have adopted the code. Starting from last year, the Tonghua Group of Hospitals has operated a 24-hour hotline for support and referral services. And also starting from last year, we have started to provide more training resources to enhance sensitivity of medical and healthcare professionals towards sexual minorities. And we have also organized a briefing session, which was also attended by myself that was held in January. And we are also going, we actually held workshops in late March. And then we will again give more resources to teachers and other professions. We are also drawing up a charter on non-discrimination of sexual minorities for voluntary adoption by organizations and also looking into the experience of other jurisdictions in making use of legislation and other means to eliminate discrimination. We'll complete the study in the first half of the year. As for mainland and Taiwan affairs, after the announcement of the outline development plan of the Greater Bay Area, we are going into another stage. The CIE is heading a high-level steering committee and also within the CMAB, we are going to set up a development office in order to implement the relevant work. We will need the FC of the Legislative Council for your approval of the creation of post proposals. As for regional cooperation, we'll continue to deepen regional cooperation with Penper River Delta region, including Shanghai, Beijing, Fujian, and Sichuan in order that we can adopt a pragmatic approach and launch initiatives once they are ready. Starting from August 2017, relevant central authorities have announced a number of policy measures to facilitate Hong Kong residents on the mainland. Starting from the 1st of September, there is the announcement of the Regulations for Application of Residence Permit for Hong Kong, Macau, and Taiwan residents and will continue to reflect the views of Hong Kong people to the mainland authorities with a view to striving for more facilitation measures for Hong Kong people on the mainland. As for Hong Kong-Taiwan relations, we'll continue to foster economic trade and cultural exchanges and cooperation between Hong Kong and Taiwan. The Hong Kong Economic Trade and Cultural Office in Taiwan will continue to do liaison work and then organize different activities in order to introduce Hong Kong's advantages so that Taiwan people know the development of Hong Kong so as to enhance cooperation between the two places. Thank you. Eleven members are going to ask questions. I will read out their order. Claudia Mo, Charles Mok, Chih Hui Te, Alna Hing, Alice Mack, Gary Fan, Luc Chong Hong, Dr. Chang Chung Tai, Chen Chi Chin, Dennis Kock, Ma Feng Kock. And then we also have Helena Wong. First of all, Ms. Claudia Mo, four minutes. Thank you. Sixty-two and eighty-two, please. Those are the two question numbers. First of all, sixty-two. I am so frustrated because actually according to the number of complaints with regard to anti-discrimination laws in the last six years, the number of convictions, how many were there? It was zero. It was not even one. I'm very concerned that this would mean that our anti-discrimination laws are so ineffective. And also in 2018, there were ten which are in progress. You say the investigation is in progress. Please do not drag your feet. And also, and this year, up till the 8th of March, with regard to public organizations, including government, we have received eight complaints already. And you can see the trend from 2014 with regard to complaints against public organizations, including government departments. And these complaints have to do with racial discrimination. In 2018, there were thirteen. From four in 2014 to thirteen last year. I'd like to ask the secretary. It seems you don't want to include the government within the law and you people cannot just complain against it. Say, for example, if you are served by the police and there is no way for you to complain against the police in this context. You cannot complain against the police for racial discrimination. This is very undesirable. And also eighty-two, if you have the time, please also answer me. This is asked by Dr. Chang Chung Tai. Do you think that the management of the REO is so messy? You lost something two, three years ago and then you have been hiding the fact. It was only uncovered by the media. So you admitted and then you come out to say, yes, it's very serious. We will tackle it seriously, but it's a lot of hot air. You have lost two computers and you have said nothing about it ever since. How can you tell the REO to do a better job? Mr. Nip, is it up to you to answer the question? Well, yes. First of all, about anti-discrimination laws. When the EOC takes care of complaints, it acts according to the laws. According, well, as for the work of the EOC, I know that the new chairman will come to the panel in order to report to members and also discuss with members. As for the government, we are promoting equality amongst the races and we have a guideline. We are going to enhance it so that it will apply to everybody, including government. In terms of the discrimination law review, there are eight recommendations being studied by the bill's committee. Many of these have to do with the bill itself. And Ms. Mo, you mentioned certain recommendations. Those will be studied when we tackle the next batch of recommendations. Therefore, the work is going on. As for the REO and the handling of personal particulars and the loss of register of electors, I already gave an account this morning. I can say that when such things happen, we will seriously follow up the matter and we are not just giving hot air. We are doing something practical in order to take improvement measures. Just one more word. He did not tell me whether he reported to the police. Chairman, this morning, we already said that we had already reported to the police and we have already formally notified the Office of the PCPD. I can see that the PCPD has issued a press release and that they will be doing some compliance investigation. Zero-eight-two, please. Mr. Charles Mok. And he asked what the measures will be to prevent such from happening again. But whatever you do will not matter because the entire register has been lost. You said you gave an account and you have only talked about communication problems and also maladministration. I think that is far from enough. Last time, we lost two computers. There is not enough transparency. Was anyone penalized? If yes, how? You cannot say that this is about the personal information of staff so you don't tell us anything. Will this happen again this time? But then this time again, there is a particular seriousness. This is not only about personal particulars, but also about whether people voted. This is Ms. Alice Mack's constituency. I can understand that she thinks that this is so important, but this is also related to me because according to reports, this is about an ICAC case with regard to the suspected vote rigging incident in the IT sector in 2016. If there is such a problem, then there is a problem of justice and also there will be an impact on prosecution by the ICAC. I don't want to talk about the case, but then you can see how serious it is. We have got not one incident, but two. And you cannot just say that this is an internal problem of the department. How can you rebuild the public's confidence? And in future, and even now, people may apply the conspiracy theory already. That is it that this was deliberate? That people were trying to destroy certain evidence? This has damaged the confidence of the public in the ICAC's ability to enforce the law. How can you give confidence back to the public? Secretary, thank you, Mr. Mok, for your concern and your question. As I said a few days ago and also this morning, on this case of the loss of a register of electors, we find it very regrettable. What is important is how we follow up the matter. First, we have reported to the police. Secondly, we have formally notified the Office of the PCPD. And the PCPD will be mounting a compliance investigation in accordance with the law. So the investigation will be conducted. And right away, the REO will inform the affected voters and also organizations and governments which will make use of personal data more. They will be informed and tell them about the incident. And also, we will check the voter registration information to see whether there have been changes since 2016. If yes, the REO will take the initiative to liaise with the voters concerned in order to confirm the changes. These are what we are going to do right away. And then the REO will have to provide a detailed report to the EAC and the Bureau in order for us to understand how this happened and what the problems were. Will you submit these reports to the public and the LEGCO? I will say more.
管理委员会呢也都 the EAC would also carry out an investigation and come up with recommendations so far. So these bodies will carry out the follow-up and investigative work. And later, we will certainly report the outcome to the public as well as LEGCO. Our aim is to learn our lesson to avoid repeats of such incidents in the future and reinstate public confidence in our public elections. Ms. Edi Chu, four minutes. Thank you. I will be forthcoming. The secretary called the incident a miscommunication. I think this is the case for all bureaus. The same goes for Frank Chan. He said no one told him about the forgerys along the Chating to Central Link and this incident was no different. The chief electoral officer and secretary did not know about the incident and no one has been held accountable for the loss of the register. So as an accountable official, will the secretary shoulder the responsibility by offering to resign? And secondly, as we heard from the news, apparently you just knew about the incident, but after 2016, the REO changed their approach to the storage of electoral materials. And the register of electors was stored in a red bag. So who decided to make such change? Which level of staff from the REO was involved in the decision-making? And who from the CMAB was involved? If no one knew about the change, so are you saying that the red bags appeared or were adopted all of a sudden? And thirdly, the ICAC investigated on the vote rigging within the IT subsector and they found out about the loss of the register. So how could the ICAC not inform you about it? So how could the frontline officers collectively hide the incident? Ms. Chu, I suppose you are following up on zero-eight-two. Yes. Ms. Chu asked three questions. First of all, in terms of responsibility, I reiterate that I explained how we knew about the incident and I stated the facts. So are you going to resign over it? The chief electoral officer is a civil servant, so I won't make life difficult for him, but you are the secretary. My responsibility is to deal with the follow-up issues. So in recent days, this is what I have done and I have explained the issue and I have outlined our follow-up work. In response to your third question, in terms of responsibility, I think we should first clarify the issue and identify where the problem lies. This is about policymaking and it also involves operational issues. So the priority is to clarify the incident before we come up with conclusions or make any requests. I'm sure Mr. Chu would understand this. In terms of updates to procedures after each election, especially on the storage of materials, I would defer to the chief electoral officer. And the enforcement authorities have their own guidelines and procedures and they do not necessarily notify the relevant policy bureaus. Mr. Wong Si Man. After every election, the REO would review the various electoral procedures in order to refine the system. After the 2016 LEGCO election, the REO implemented a number of improvement measures, including measures on the storage of electoral materials. This is something conducted after every single election. Even after the, by election on the 11th of March this year and December last year, we have done the same. And the principal electoral officer would coordinate the entire process and any changes would be approved by him. Ms. Alloch, in four minutes. I have two questions. First, CMAB zero-seven-six, which was a question raised by Dr. Lena Wong. She looked at the expenditures of different economic and trade offices and we saw great differences. The difference in expenditure between the ETOs in the mainland and Taiwan were very different. The Taiwan office only hired less than 10 staff, but while each mainland ETO hired more than 10 staff. We are talking about a homicide that occurred in Taiwan. So why is the manpower level of the Taiwan office much lower than those of the mainland ETOs? Did Taiwan indicate any intention to discuss the treatment on that homicide? There is a current lack of communication. Are you going to step up the manpower level? The second question is on CMAB zero-two-six on the Equal Opportunities Commission. In recent years, the EOC came up with a report on improving efficiency. You hired a person called Mr. John Yee Chan and you spent $3 million and they came up with a few pages and this is totally unacceptable. The EOC was asked to draft a report from scratch. So if they had no knowledge or background in human rights, doesn't mean that you hired the wrong person. The first question was about the different ETOs, including mainland ETOs and the Taiwan office. The manpower provisions depend on the workload of the respective offices. And there is no direct correlation to the homicide in Taiwan. For the Economic Trade and Cultural Office in Taiwan, they would help coordinate with those doing business or studying in Taiwan. And the establishment is smaller than those of the mainland ETOs and this is reflected in the budgets. The second question is about the EOC's governance report. First of all, this is not under the ambit of the CMAB. It is an internal governance issue of the EOC. The EOC is an independent body. And the EOC has a board of directors who would carry out governance issues. So such reports were internal matters of the EOC and we were not involved. Secretary, so you are shifting the blame to others like Mr. Chu said. Do you think the CMAB is obliged to promoting human rights? Even if you say there is no direct correlation, the performance of the EOC is directly related to you. And you wasted $3 million and the report failed to review the functions of the EOC. I think you should reflect upon this. The homicide in Taiwan reflects a lack of communication and our ETOs should represent Hong Kong and it should be the main body of communication with other governments. Secretary, would you like to respond? I wasn't shifting the blame. Each body and bureau has their own responsibilities. If internal issues of the EOC affect any facet of their work, we will certainly follow up. In terms of communication between the SAR government and Taiwan, apart from the Economic Trade and Cultural Office in Taiwan, there are two cooperative councils who would carry out the job of communication. Ms. Alice Mack, four minutes. I wonder whether the answers we see on the website were uploaded by the Bureau. There was no change in the order of our questions, right? I'd like to call your attention to zero-eight-four. The order of the answers were different from that of the questions. So the REO got the orders of the questions wrong. The first question was about manpower, but the reply was under bullet point number three. So how can we trust the REO? I'd like to ask about zero-eight-two as well. You talked about the storage of elective particulars. So doesn't mean that you breached the law. So would you be responsible for that? We are talking about particulars of more than 8,000 electors and you failed to report the incident until after a few years. You said you reported the incident to police. Do you expect any results to the investigation? So how would you hold yourself accountable to those 8,000 electors? Secretary, I understand the concerns of Ms. Mack and I share the same sentiments. The incident was not reported for two years and the incident was unacceptable and we are regretful. We hope to learn our lesson and carry out improvement measures. The police would come up with an investigation report and the PCPD would also carry out a compliance check and investigation to identify the problem and recommend how personal data can be better safeguarded. The incident also shows inadequacies in the management and internal controls of the REO. So a port would be submitted and the REO would also launch an investigation to identify such inadequacies and come up with improvement suggestions. Once again, I apologize to electors affected by this incident. We promise to carry out follow-up work in a serious manner. And in terms of the electoral arrangements, we hope to improve upon them in order to ensure fair, open, and honest operation of the elections and to instill confidence in our electors. Chairman, the secretary explained the manpower provision and expenditure for our elections. But the REO has become a black hole for personal data. Everything would be lost. The computers lost could not be retrieved and the same goes for the register. I think it is a case of theft. Is that the case? So how can the electors still trust the REO? And you are asking for voters to register? So I think this is a waste of public money, right? Secretary, we will continue to promote voter registration. But we realize that the public's confidence has taken a hit from such incidents and we hope to learn our lesson and improve in the future. Mr. Gary Fan, four minutes.
Thank you, Secretary. Apologies.
Thank you. Secretary, apologies are useless. They are inadequate. You are an accountability official, and if something happens within your jurisdiction and you are not accountable, and you don't learn the lesson and improve the system. The pro-establishment camp has removed a lot of the regulatory power of the council here, and that is why these incompetent officials can still sit opposite us. This is the result we are facing. Chairman, I'd like to go to 016, please. The administration says, starting from August 2018, there was a series of publicity on the Greater Bay Area to allow the public to understand it, and also to allow them to be interested, and also targeting young people, including social media and also the internet. If you are going to target the young people, so you don't only take out newspaper advertisements targeting the elderly and the middle-aged, but you also go on social media. You are going to target the youth. Have you done anything to collect the views of Hong Kong young people with regard to the announcement of the ODP of GBA before you formulated your publicity strategy? You don't only choose the channel, but you have to understand the views of the young people. Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Fan. On the ODP of the Greater Bay Area, the first step of implementation will be such that we allow the public to understand better the ODP and also particularly amongst young people. The young people we have contacted may have different views about the mainland. Some have positive views, some have negative views, some always go to the mainland, some have never gone there. Therefore, when we make use of social media to do publicity with the young people, well, this is the channel, and we'd like to tell them the facts. No, yes or no, have you collected the views of young people? We do so through different channels, trying to understand the views of the public. And there are many surveys done in the community. We have taken reference from those surveys. Okay, secondly, you said that there was positive and negative response towards this. And the Hong Kong U did a survey on the 19th of March with regard to the age group of 18 to 29. 60 to 70% did not have confidence in the future of Hong Kong or the government of Hong Kong or the government of the CPG. So the younger they are, the less trust they have in the government. Now you are going to make use of $38 million for publicizing GBA. How can you target the youth? You don't only choose the platform or the channel, but how can you allow them to have confidence? Because they are afraid that Hong Kong will be assimilated by Chinese cities and that there will be the destruction of the one country, two systems principle. What is your own assessment about this? Well, first of all, $38 million also include manpower charges at the office. And publicity and promotion only take up a small proportion of that. As for young people, I have read different surveys done at different times in detail. I can see that there has been an increased understanding about the GP, GBA. And there are many people who say they would try to understand the issue. But of course, there are still people who don't know about GBA and don't understand it. Therefore, we will make use of the platform in order to lay bare the facts, and young people can make their own judgment. Sorry, Mr. Fan did not come through. No, I was saying, sorry, Mr. Fan did not use the mic. Therefore, we need to allow them to grasp basic information. We have to tell them the information through a platform that they would use. I think the secretary's viewpoint is very clear.
Mr. Michael Look, four minutes. Thank you, Chair. I'd like to follow up. Question 018 and 059. These have to do with our mainland offices. The first one. I'd like to, um, understand this because in 018, you say there are property cases. You answered briefly that you would have to add according to the facts. I'd like to know whether you have had any experience of success and also the proportion of successful cases. And in fact, what do you actually do? Because at our inquiry centers on the mainland, we also have to deal with these cases. So what are you going to do? And secondly, I can see that you have increased resources in order to operate liaison units on the mainland. But I find this phenomenon rather strange because you always open offices under the name of Economic and Trade Office. Do you only tackle economic and trade requests for help? Do you have other classifications? Do you also tackle legal disputes or civic disputes and other kinds of inquiries? In the long term, your offices in different mainland cities should not be called ETOs anymore. Perhaps you can add to that name. Say, for example, the FTU would call our centers Mainland Services Inquiry Center. Or those people who want to seek help from you may think that this is only about economic and trade matters, and they may not seek help from you. So how can you expand the scope of Hong Kong offices on the mainland so you can provide more support services to Hong Kong people on the mainland? Secretary, and then the PS. Mr. Look, we have five offices on the mainland, one in Beijing. That is the Beijing office, and then we have the other four, which are ETOs, and then we have 11 liaison units. Mr. Look, you are correct. Apart from investment promotion and economic and trade matters, we have the immigration unit, which will help Hong Kong people about immigration matters. We can liaise with Hong Kong people who are on the mainland, especially students, to give them information and support. So the service is not only about economic and trade matters. Mr. Look, we will consider your view. As for tackling disputes and requests for help, may I defer to the PS? I think Mr. Look understands this very well. At the Guangdong ETO, there is this well-known service, and that is we provide free legal service. In Guangzhou, Shenzhen, Dongguan, and Zhongshan, we are operating telephone hotlines, and we have duty lawyers who can interview people seeking help. We have to see whether the cases are ready in the judicial process. But if the person concerned is willing, we can refer the case to appropriate mainland authorities. Mr. Look, you have got a very good observation. You say the ETO may give people the impression that we only help with economic and trade services. But actually, on the internet, we also publicize our service. We do have an immigration unit. Hong Kong people who live or go to the mainland know very well that we have an immigration unit who can help with lost documentation or other matters relating to identity documentation. Will you consider calling your offices a different name? Will you also expand your legal service to other ETOs? A brief reply, please. Where resources permit, we will give this active consideration. Next, Dr. Cheng Zhongtao, four minutes.
Thank you. 008 and 082, please. These questions were asked by me. These were about the REO and also the PCPD and the problems they are facing. Secretary, I hope you understand the background. Within my term, the first motion about the Electoral Powers and Privileges Ordinance was in May 2017 with regard to the loss of the two computers. At that time, FTU did not stay in the room, and the vote was a tie 25 to 25. But at the House Committee, Mr. Dary Lee cast the chairman's vote, which was against the motion. We still don't know where the computers are, and now we have found that a register of electors could not be found. This is because Hong Kong people only believe in elections. Hong Kong people think that once they cast a vote, they have done some service to the, to Hong Kong and have done something to protect Hong Kong. So to Hong Kong people, are we cheating ourselves? We have always thought that elections in Hong Kong are open, fair, and just and honest. But these past four years have told us that the REO has lost computers and registers. Maybe these are accidents, or maybe these are human errors. And then this tells us that what we have always believed in can be so easily lost. Those two computers, what has happened with them? And now, according to your written reply in 082 about the register of electors, you know, the chief electoral officer has signed to confirm the matter. So I'm just asking you a very simple question. With regard to such errors committed by the REO in the last two years, I'd like to ask the secretary whether civil servants should be held responsible. Have any REO staff been penalized or deployed elsewhere because of such incidents in the last two years? Secretary, well, this is true about any department at all. If civil servants have committed mistakes or have done something wrong at work, well, maybe to different degrees. We, for example, in this case, we don't know whether staff have hidden anything from us. And we know that there are established disciplinary procedures. The CSP will act according to those procedures in order to handle such cases. Whenever this happens, there is a mechanism and a procedure to establish responsibility. And also, what kind of penalty should be meted out? There is a code within the CSP in order to tackle this. Dr. Chang, any follow-up?
Well, if that's the case, then to be rather fair to civil servants, you are the secretary. And this has happened a second time. Last time, when I moved a motion on the Electoral PMP Ordinance, I think I have already done what is possible at council to face the issue, but now it has happened again. What about the management of your bureau, secretary?
As I said earlier on, this time around, a register of electors cannot be found. We have done what should be done at once, and we are going to mount a detailed investigation that is going to be done by the REO. We should wait for the result of the investigation, and then we will give an account. Next, Mr. Ray Chan, four minutes.
Thank you, Chair. Ms. Alice Mac was very angry. She asked three points in her question, and then the answers were given in a different order. She was very angry. And then I can refer to OO2. I asked eight sub-questions, but then they chose what they wanted to answer. I asked eight points. They only gave answers to six, and then they jumbled up the order and did not answer something else. In your speech, you might think that the secretary will attach a lot of importance to anti-discrimination on grounds of sexual orientation and gender identity because he gave an entire page on it. But then in my question, OO2, I think he has covered more or less the same thing. I think it's you know, secretary, what is most crucial is that those who are concerned about the rights of sexual minorities, they want to know the progress of legislation to provide for this. And this is also in my question. But then in the reply, as he said in the speech, he says that we are looking into other jurisdictions, how we can legislate to eliminate discrimination. We hope to finish it within the first half of the year. Now we are in mid-April. It means there will just be two more months. Will you be releasing a report after your investigation? And then you will tell the public how you are going to have an in-depth discussion in the community on the issue of whether legislation should be introduced to protect people of different sexual orientations. Now, you are going in a circle. We are in hell. We will never be reborn because you are continuing with your investigation and then consultation and investigation. So what will be the next step?
So what you said is better than none. So even if you create a hotline and receive 3,000 calls for help, there is nothing you can do. So the most important thing is to tell the public what you would do next. According to the 2017 survey by HAU, nearly 70% of the public support legislation on sexual minorities. So you said there will be detailed discussions. So what will be the next step forward? Secretary, thank you very much. I believe Mr. Chen knows that based on our reply and my speech today, we are conducting work on multiple fronts. You might think that certain things are merely better than nothing. And I understand that there is a lot of focus on legislation, but at the same time, there is a lot of controversy. Earlier, I met bodies with very different views, which also included Mr. Chen and the, and there were very divergent views. And we have looked at the administrative and legislative measures in other jurisdictions. And after we compile a report, the outcome can form the basis for discussion. We will later explain our next step forward. And at this stage, I can only say that the study is ongoing. And we do have a timetable. After the work is completed, we will follow up with Mr. Chen and other stakeholders. Chairman, you must have a next step forward. You will face opposition on any social issues, including the National Anthem Law. You cannot wait till there is no opposition before you act. Mr. Ma Fengkou, four minutes. Thank you.
I'd like to follow up on question 060. There are three parts to the question. First, has the government conducted any studies on the impression of Greater Bay Area residents on Hong Kong people? What are the positive and negative impressions? The government did not address this question, and I don't quite understand why. I asked very similar questions in recent years. If we are to enhance cooperation with the Bay Area, at least our people must be on the same page. I asked about how mainland residents see Hong Kong people. Apparently, the government is reluctant to find out more. This is something I don't understand. I hope the government would explain the issue. If we don't, if we don't understand what each other think, it is hard to, for our people to connect. For question three, the government said in 2018 to 19, there will be more than 1,000 projects on the Bay Area. So how many applications have been received by the government on upcoming Bay Area projects? And how many have been approved? So were applications open to everyone or by invitation only? Thank you very much for the question. First of all, on promoting the outline development plan for the Bay Area and forging closer ties between the people in both places, we did not conduct any study on the impression of Hong Kong residents by Bay Area residents. In the implementation of the outline development plan, it is about implementing the directions. So we covered the major policy directions, and this is the strategy we adopt. So we covered the, um, major policy directions, and this is the, um, strategy we adopt. And through our mainland E T Os and other channels, we will introduce Hong Kong to the mainland. So, um, this way, Hong Kong residents would know more about the Bay Area. So in the, um, promotion of the Bay Area, apart from using social media such as Facebook and Instagram, we also have a Weibo account. And the idea is to convey the relevant information to the residents. We will pay attention to, um, various studies available and, um, make reference to the results. As for the second part of the question, um, as I understand, the Policy Innovation and Coordination, um, Office would subsidize some of the work and some of the projects are related to the Bay Area. As for details of the sub- subsidized projects, we can provide details if necessary. Under Pico, certain projects are related to the Bay Area. What is the mechanism for applications? Do you accept some applications from anyone or is it by invitation only? There is an open call for applications before we, um, vet the projects one by one. Doctor Helena Wong, four minutes. For the REO, can you advise the question number, please? Please let me ask the question first. Ms. S Mac was infuriated, infuriated. I think, um, it's a fame, same for us. Um, the, the register of electors was lost. I wonder why the probation camp did not endorse the Democratic Party's recommendation. That is the, um, REO's proposal should be shelved. The, um, pre-voting, um, scheme should be, or proposal should be shelved. We might see a repeat of, um, the loss of register. So would the REO consider withdrawing the, um, pilot scheme? I assume that this is about question eighty-two. Thank you for the question. For the, um, advanced, um, voting pilot scheme, it was an idea formulated after we review the, um, voter registration cycle. And earlier at the Constitutional Affairs Panel of Lesho, we consulted members on the advanced voting pilot scheme. And having heard the comments of members, we are, um, considering our position. And we will, um, come up with a decision, decision by the second half of the year. You should find out whether it was a loss of the register and whether it was a theft. I'm glad that you called the police because the incident does warrant a criminal investigation. Before you find out, um, more about the incidents, such scheme should be shelved. Because next time, you might, um, lose, um, the personal data of the electors. This is a very realistic prospect. I'd like to ask about questions seventy-six and seventy-four. There is a Guangdong E T O and, um, eighteen civil servants are to be recruited with a budget of sixty-seven point seven five million dollars. And, um, there is also a, um, Greater Bay Area Development Office, which is located in Hong Kong. There will be eighteen civil servants with a budget of, um, thirty-eight million dollars. So one is an E T O in the mainland, the other is an office in Hong Kong. Is there any redundancy in their scope of work? Mr. Roy Tang, thank you. Later, we will go to the Establishment Committee and Finance Committee on the setting up of the G B A office, which is located in Hong Kong. We need to create this office, um, because with the promulgation of the outline development plan of the Bay Area, we need to handle a number of issues by liaising with the mainland authorities. The, um, Guangdong E T O was set up a long time ago. Its functions have not changed. Its main function is to promote economic and trade relations with the five Guangdong municipalities or cities. Mr. Christopher Chang, I'd like to follow up on C M A B zero one zero. On the promotion of the Greater Bay Area, the government spent ten point five million dollars last year on promotion efforts. And this includes a thematic website for the Bay Area for the Great, Greater Bay Area portal. We saw that the, um, portal was mainly about policy issues. And, um, it is rather bland. And as of four thirty, as at four thirty, um, P M today, there were only, um, about five thousand likes on Facebook. And some posts only had about thirty likes, which is a very low number. Has the government reviewed the, um, promotion efforts of the Bay Area in the past year? And what were the results? And in the coming year, will the government try to solicit more likes from young people? Can you, um, tell us more about the details? The government has, um, promoted the opportunities Hong Kong can enjoy in the Bay Area, but there are concerns that Hong Kong would be assimilated by the Bay Area, and we will lose our personality. So, um, does the government hold relevant information, especially, um, how well young people understand the Bay Area? As for views that Hong Kong might be assimilated, does the government have any measures in place so that, um, Hong Kong people would have the correct understanding on Bay Area developments? Thank you very much for Mr. Chang's, um, concerns on the, um, portal and Facebook accounts relating to the Bay Area. For our Facebook page, its function is to, um, soft sell information related to the Bay Area. For young people who might not know a lot about the Bay Area, we hope to, um, share some basic information with them. As for the dedicated, um, portal, there are different sections. For example, um, I N T, finance, logistics, et cetera, and their respective functions in the, um, outline development plan. And there are also links to relevant, um, websites of, um, other cities in the Bay Area. We hope to, um, create a one-stop platform where different information is made available. We will continue to, um, refine our portal. As for the number of likes on our Facebook page, as usual, um, it is hard to boost the number of likes in government accounts. But, um, there might be, uh, a difference in the number of, um, likes and the level of interest. Some people might be interested, but, um, yet they do not hit like. As for the concerns over assimilation, one country, two systems is a cornerstone in the Bay Area development. So in the course of development, we will continue to embrace one country, two systems.
And Hong Kong's characteristics under one country, two system will be preserved. So there is no question of full, um, assimilation. Mr. Jeremy Tam, four minutes. Zero one three and also zero seven six, please. I'd like to talk about the Hong Kong Economic, Trade and Cultural Office in Taiwan. In zero one three, you say that this office is very important because it's a bridge between Hong Kong and Taiwan. And you said, uh, it has done a lot in helping mainland and Taiwan businesses opening, uh, office in Hong Kong, et cetera. Let's ask you this question. The directorate officer, meaning the director of this office in Taiwan, and I think that post has been left vacant, is that right? And if yes, for how long? Mr. Tang, P S. Thank you, Chair. Civil servants are to be deployed in July twenty seventeen. Because of work requirements, the original director was deployed back to Hong Kong for other duties. And we are not just talking about Taiwan. And this includes mainland E T Os and other offices under the C E D Bureau. And it is often difficult to ask civil servants to be deployed overseas because it will have an impact on the entire family and also education of the children. We are still looking for someone to fill that post. You mean the post has been vacant since July twenty seventeen, is that right? Well, actually, July twenty eighteen. So we are talking about almost a year. And you mentioned the E T Os on the mainland. Well, you are responsible for the offices on the mainland and Taiwan. In which office on the mainland, uh, is the post also vacant? Chairman, my memory tells me that in the Shantong E T O, we have also a vacant post. But then the other larger E T Os do not have any vacant post. For how long? Well, he says that with regard to this particular rank, the post has been filled in all large offices. That's correct. Well, you have a whole host of able people in the civil service. Is it so difficult for you to find somebody to fill this post? And about the one who was deployed back to Hong Kong, why is it that there was no successor? And yet, he or she was deployed back to Hong Kong. Was he or she so important and needed for a particular post? Or is it that you can actually re- remove this post because it has been left for vacant for almost a year? The CSP makes arrangements for staff deployment. And secondly, if we cannot find a suitable person, we can look for somebody from other grades. Maybe this person may not be an administrative officer. But we have worked very hard. And if no one volunteers, then there is no policy within government to compel any staff member to take up the post because it will have an impact on the entire family. Can you confirm something? Whether it is, um, mainland or Taiwan, is it that you relied on people who volunteered? If no one volunteers, then the post would be left vacant? Well, actually, before a post is to become vacant, we will do some internal recruitment for half a year. But if, um, you know, anyone should volunteer, it is up to the individuals concerned. No, are you telling me no one volunteered to fill this post? Chairman, that's correct. Next. Mr. Eddie Chu, second round. Three minutes. Chairman, I have two questions. First, zero five zero, asked by Doctor Priscilla Leng. This is about whether electoral laws will be amended so that people who intend to take part in elections will have a clearer understanding of what it means by upholding the Basic Law and pledging allegiance to the Hong Kong SAR. Well, we all know it now. Basically, there are no standards. This is a gray area. Whatever the electoral officer says will be sustained. Say, for example, if you are disqualified, they will say, you know it in your heart, uh, you know what you have done, so you know why. When you answered, Doctor Priscilla Leng, you said that you would study carefully whether local legislation should be straightened out and consider how to make arrange appropriate adjustments. Doctor Priscilla Leng asked you about progress. So can you be more specific? This year, we have district council elections, next year, legislative council elections. Let's ask you whether you will do something before these two elections? Will you clarify matters before these two elections? Number two, zero six nine. This is a question by Mr. Jeremy Tam. This is about reports from the SARG to the central authorities. And he asked about the content of such reports. And you said that, uh, usually you are not going to make public information that you communicate to the C P G. The impression the C M A B is giving me is that it is an information black hole, whatever has to do with the mainland. We are not talking about external relations. We are in the same country. Hong Kong citizens should have the right to know. And how can this be realized with regard to communication with the central government? Uh, those two questions, please. Mr. Nip. Thank you, Mr. Chu. First question about, um, election-related laws. As we have answered, Doctor Priscilla Leng, first, whether nomination of candidates is valid. Well, this is already in the law and the responsibility is given to the electoral officer. And also, the decision must be supported by reasoning. And this is made public. If, uh, it is not agreed with, then there can be a petition submitted. Secondly, according to the Basic Law and also the M P C S C decisions and also rulings by the court in order to do a review. I can understand that there are still some election petitions which are still handled by our courts. So these will form the basis for the review, and it is still going on. Sorry, Mr. Chu is not coming through. Mr. Nip, you'd like to add? Chairman, I have no control over court procedures, so I do not have specific, uh, timetables. I'd like to go back to zero eight four, where my question is not answered according to the order that it is asked. First, please, we have lost information about eight thousand voters. Voters are very concerned because it is about their personal particulars. They don't know whether there is theft. Please, Doctor Helena Wong, on the eighteenth of February at the meeting, I have already said that the REO has a poor record and it has lost so many things. And I have asked how the votes cast in advanced voting can be preserved and protected. Now, the public are concerned about their loss of personal particulars. So please do not take advantage, um, to criticize other members. Secretary, you said that you would try to reassure the public and that, uh, the public should trust the REO and would be happy to come forward to be registered as voting. But what can you do? Uh, in zero eight four at point three, amongst your staff who tackle elections, most of them are time-limited civil service posts and five hundred contract staff. How can you ensure that your work is continuous? Can you now identify the staff who handled the twenty sixteen election? If you continue to use so many contract staff members, how can you reassure the public that you would handle voter information properly? Secretary. Ms. Mack's question is very valid, and this is something Miss Mac's question is very valid, and this is something we should face up to. First, as I said, after the register of voters incident, we are learning from the incident and also we are going to make improvements. And then we should identify where the problem lies. And maybe it is a systemic problem or an executive problem. We have to wait for the conclusion of the investigation before we will know. Secondly, about the establishment of the R E O, very often, not permanent people are deployed. And this is a fact. In the last year or so, I could see that at the principal executive officer rank, very often it is time limited and the post is filled only in an election cycle. And every time elections are concluded, the post will be cancelled. So it is not a long-term post, and we have asked the Legislative Council to make this post permanent. When this was discussed, members questioned whether we are making the opportunity to create yet more posts. But anyway, that post has been created, so I hope we can now do some long-term improvement. We will certainly learn from this lesson to see whether we need to make any adjustments in the structure. If necessary, we will come back and consult members and also seek your support. Next, Mister Jeremy Tam, second round, three minutes. Zero one three and zero seven six to continue with my earlier questions. Just now, the P S said no one volunteered, so the post was left vacant for nine months. If that's the case, doesn't mean the post can be left vacant for five years, ten years? Mister Tang, P S. Actually, we are working very hard together with the C S B. We'll still open the post for recruitment, and it is an administrative officer post. But then if a post has been left vacant for a long time, we will now open up the post to other grades at other E T Os or liaison units. We have considered staff of other grades. Have you done any consideration then in this direction about this Taiwan post? We are in this process, Chairman. Please, may I continue? At smaller offices, we may re-engage retired civil servants on contract. We will consider all possibilities. Well, with regard to grade B A Os, you say no one volunteered. You say the entire family have to be relocated. Then this actually may apply to all E T Os. Then does it mean the post can be left vacant? Well, you say this post can be taken up by other staff members. As I said, you can actually cancel the post. And it's quite strange with regard to timing. In July twenty eighteen, there was a director, but the person was deployed back to Hong Kong without a successor. And at the same time, with regard to the Taiwan office in Hong Kong, in June twenty eighteen, it was announced that a certain Mister Lo, Mister Lu Changshui, was supposed to take up the post. But now, until now, you still haven't given a visa to this person to come to Hong Kong. Is that a kind of revenge? What is happening? We are not talking about the return of fugitive offenders. This is only about economic and trade matters. So what is happening? You are not sending somebody over, and you are not allowing that person to come to the Taiwan office in Hong Kong. What is happening? Secretary. Well, actually, you are talking about two separate issues. These two issues should be separate. Well, no, they happened at the same time. With regard to the Taipei Taiwan office in Hong Kong, well, I should not comment on individual cases. And the immigration department will act according to laws and policies with regard to this application. As to our own office, whether it be E T Os in overseas countries on the mainland or in Taiwan, the basic principle is we will recruit internally if there is going to be a vacancy, and we'll see whether anyone signs up and whether that person is a suitable person. If we can't find somebody in that grade, we will consider other grades. And also, we'll consider other means to take care of the situation. And we are doing the same thing, and we are acting according to the same principle with regard to the Taiwan office. Ray Chen, three minutes, second round.
I appreciate Mister Jeremy Tam's efforts in making follow-up questions. It is a political decision, and they call it an administrative measure. So after the election in Taiwan, depending on the outcome, perhaps they would ask the same question again. I think the situation is obvious. They do not intend to engage in any exchange with Taiwan, and they are using the homicide as an excuse. We are talking about the C M A B. While the constitutional reform is a mess, they could not manage the E O C or promote equal opportunities. I think the E M A B might as well fold. I would follow up on C M A B zero zero zero, zero zero two. The government refused to legislate, so instead they are offering some funding so that, so they have something to write about. For the Code of Practice Against Discrimination in Employment on the Ground of Sexual Orientation, three hundred and fifty organizations have signed up. So do you remember what your answer was when I asked the same question last year? It was three hundred and thirty, and this year you have twenty more. So I think the public can see your efforts. As for the training on healthcare, for healthcare professionals on the sensitivities towards sexual minorities, and when will be, when will resources be available for teachers, et cetera? And the Working Group on Discrimination Against Sexual Minorities came up with these recommendations in which I was a member. It has been two or three years. You didn't answer parts of my question. I think the Working Group ended without much fruition. We came up with a few recommendations, and are you going to spend another few years before we come up with new recommendations? Secretary, thank you very much. The first question was about the Code of Practice. We will continue to promote the code. Compared with last year, the number of employees involved rose from five hundred thousand to five hundred and fifty, and we will certainly continue our efforts. In terms of exchanges or the prior working group, I have communicated with different stakeholders and groups. But as for our actual approach, we would look at the actual needs. Mister Nip. We will conduct the working phases. We will work with healthcare professionals first. And in the next stage, we will, well, currently, we are working with the human resources profession. Miss Asmaak, third round, three minutes. Miss Mac. My question is about question eighty-two. When you look at the reply under the second bullet point, they said the R E O would circulate the guidelines on protecting personal data and there is sample training, but we all saw the results. Apparently, you did everything, but there were still incidents. First, the loss of computers, and now the loss of the register of electors. So what are you going to do to ensure that these personal data can be safeguarded? The eight thousand odd electors are concerned that their personal particulars have been exposed. So how can you assure them that their personal data would not be misused? And have you adopted any measures? Mister Nip. The first question was about the improvement measures. For the loss of computers and the loss of register, after we identified the issues, we took out improvement measures. In terms of the procedures, guidelines, training, et cetera, work needs to be done. And both the R E O and E A C would follow up, and we will provide all necessary support. As for the treatment of personal data after these incidents, for the particulars of the eight thousand odd electors involved, the R E O would review whether any of the particulars have been updated since twenty sixteen. If so, the electors would be contacted, and we will follow up with them. And the R E O would write to the relevant authorities and departments, reminding them or alerting them of the incident and reminding them to stay vigilant. We are aware of the losses involved in these incidents. And we will be specific in our improvement measures by looking at the system, guidelines, execution, and training efforts. And sensitivity, sensitivity towards the treatment of personal data is certainly very important. You must notify the eight thousand odd electors as soon as possible. Some of the, well, there is a lot of confusion right now, and everyone is very concerned. They do not know whether they have been affected. There are a lot of primary schools in Chengi, but a lot of residents do not, did not actually vote there. The R E O will inform the affected electors. Mister Jeremy Tam, three minutes. I want to work on questions thirteen and seventy-six. The reply was illogical. In July twenty eighteen, your director in Taiwan was redeployed while the candidate from Taiwan was not granted a visa. You said it wasn't of political consideration, but you should be honest. You should stop cheating us. I think the case is way too obvious. When we look at the chronology of the incidents, when the C S B redeployed the director in Taiwan, did they consult your opinion? Did you have any say over this, or was it a decision by the C S B? Secretary or permanent secretary? In terms of manpower deployments, if an officer has been on the post for a specific period of time, he or she might be redeployed. And there might or might not be a successor to the post, and this is certainly not uncommon. In July twenty eighteen, the officer involved was due for a redeployment from the Taiwan office. Mister Tang, I have assumed the post at an overseas E T O. And there are special arrangements to such posts. They are akin to contract staff. And when I was at the Tokyo E T O, I was on a three-year contract. If I was to be extended, my consent must be obtained. So doesn't mean that the officer involved was reluctant for an extension? He or she was due for a new post while it was arranged by the C S B. So why didn't you ask whether the officer was happy to be extended? Well, if the officer was reluctant, it was, it would be another story. The three-year term was up, and the post was actually extended for a few months already. So doesn't mean that the C S B failed to find a successor to the post? If this is any other overseas E T O, if no one volunteers, the post would be left vacant. So if an E T O is in urgent need for leadership, what would happen? I was once with the C S B, and I was involved in redeployment work. There are a number of factors to consider, and this is not the sole decision of the C S B. The scenarios or circumstances of each case is different. Mister Eddie Chu, three minutes. Thank you. I would continue to follow up on zero eight two. In the previous session, Mister Wong Si Man, the C E O, mentioned that after the twenty sixteen election, you changed your approach to the storage of electoral materials. That is, you would store the register of electors in a red plastic bag. You said your assistants, that is, the principal electoral officers would be responsible. Is, can you name the specific officer involved? Which exact officer was responsible? This is my first question. Secondly, can you tell the public whether the change of approach was sparked by the loss of computers in twenty sixteen? After the twenty sixteen Leshco election, as for the actual officer involved, we would not comment on that. Mister Wong Si Man. Like we said, after every election, Chairman, time is limited. Can they tell us that the change was sparked by the loss of register? Or was it irrelevant? Or did, or they could not comment on that? This is something we would carry out after each election, and I would say that there was no direct correlation. Well, coincidentally, the issue under review was related to the loss of register in the polling station. So this is what we saw. But now you are saying that it was a routine review, and it was irrelevant. So, well, I think you, well, you could say that you did not know about it because you only knew about the loss of the register recently. So did any of your subordinates know about the incident? Or is it that your subordinates completed a review without you knowing? Mister Wong, do you have anything to add? As for the actual details, we would review it at a later stage. Mister Ray Chen, third round, three minutes. Thank you. Since twenty eighteen, the C M A B started supporting the Tonghua Group of Hospitals hotline to support sexual minorities. I'd like to know the funding involved annually, and two thousand nine hundred calls were received every year. I think this figure is rather encouraging. So my suggestion is that we should make the best use of such resources. And can the C M A B encourage the Tonghua Group of Hospitals to compile statistics on the number, on the phone calls received? And how many of them were involved with discrimination, education, housing, et cetera? Very often, our statistics on discrimination issues comes from N G O studies. But of the three thousand calls, some might be related to equal opportunities or discrimination. If you can, if they can compile such statistics, it will be conducive to our If you can, if they can compile such statistics, it will be conducive to our work in the future. Which question is it about? Zero zero two.
Secretary, I thank Mr. Chen for his proposal. Um, actually, whether it was the social work department or when we subsidize NGOs to provide the office, the information collected is usually very useful. It will help us analyze the demand for the service and also the effectiveness of that mode of service. Therefore, this Pride Line operated by Tonghua Group of Hospitals will be in this same category. As for the subsidy amount, I'd like to see whether my colleagues have the answer. Thank you, Ms. Law.
Chairman, we have promised there will be a three-year funding, about a million odd every year. But if Tonghua Group of Hospitals has the need, we are actually talking to them how the service can be enhanced. As the secretary was saying, we are looking at where review will be necessary. And in fact, about the classification of cases, we are thinking of doing it even better, like making more use of social media or follow up on specific cases and discussion about certain cases. We thank Mr. Chen for the reminder. This is what we are doing. Any follow-up? Just one more word. Another project, and that is the enhancement of sensitivity training. You have worked with healthcare officials and, uh, people, and you are going to work with human resources people. I'd like to know, uh, whether the resources can be applied for, by other people. Ms. Law?
DS? Thank you, Mr. Chen. Actually, the resources have been given to the healthcare sector. The response is good, and we have actually conducted a sharing session. Other specific organizations have applied for the resources, including sexual minority groups. We are very happy to give them the resources. And we can consider whether the information can be disseminated more to the public. If there are groups that are interested, we are most happy to supply the resources. You mean Legco members can borrow the information? Well, yes, if there is a request. Okay, we will conclude the session here. The next session will commence at five fifty. Thank you.